Wants to move along.
Now it's at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody. We'll call the council to make the order for the stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I shook hands.
Let's get the roll call. There we go. Oh, that's better.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, now we are at the audience of citizens. Any, uh, anybody to speak, uh, either here in person? If not, anybody in our Zoom audiences, welcome to speak.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
Peter Zerbozo, one five eight Elwood Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to discuss a proposed charter referendum item number two. This has been discussed quite a bit. And I know that the council's intention, should this pass, is, as you guys claim, is to keep the VNA as is. But I think the thing that we're all glossing over is that while you, the current mayor, the current counselors are here and can promise that, we don't have that promise of future counselors or mayors, and we can't predict what those people will do. So while you all can sit here and say you may not do something to the VNA, if this referendum passes, it makes the VNA vulnerable because a future council can come in, pass an ordinance, and do whatever they want with it. So I don't want my position to be misconstrued that I don't trust what you, Mr. Mayor, are saying, or what Mr. Fazino is saying, or Mr. Peonesa is saying. The concern comes from not knowing what future councils will do, and no one sitting here on the council today can guarantee that either. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Uh, no one here? Anyone out else on Zoom wish to speak on any topic? Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. Just very quickly, just a couple of quick things on the mayor's update before we get to our meeting agenda. Comes up every time this year. Campaign signs have had a few complaints. And, and it's not, you know, not either political party or sign. It's just in general, there's different thoughts. So if we would, we went through this a couple of years ago. Obviously, we all, both parties kind of agreed to not, not go crazy, not put them in bad spots, which I think we've all pretty much, uh, done. And we agreed not to put them out till 30 days before, which we all have stuck to that. So just, um, just be cautious where they're at. The only thing we asked, of course, is they don't block any line of sight because we had a bunch of that a year, you know, a few years ago. That's why this all kind of started. And we don't, you know, people are pulling out of a street, make sure they could see, you know, left, right, ahead of them, wherever they're going. That's the only issue. And they don't block any public safety, fire hydrant, or just anything. If you would make sure, uh, whatever, you know, signs you may have put out there, or someone had had put out there for you, just check them. Just make sure when you pull out of a street, they're not blocking anything. I would just ask you that. If they do, please move them. Other than that, we're only a couple of weeks away from the election. So I think most of them are not bothering anybody. But we still, we still have had a few comments and complaints, and we've, we've kind of explained that mostly to Maureen. That, you know, if something, and then there's the state highway, which the state, I think one year came and took a bunch down that were in the right of way. We're trying, you know, that's up to them. We try not to have that happen either, but they, one year came and just did it. But I don't even know if we knew they were coming. So just, just be aware of that. But that's not the town doing that. So.
Is there a specific distance for fire hydrants?
Uh.
Needs to be avoided by?
I don't know. You know, that's a good question, Jack. I don't know. Just, just so they could reach it. I know they could knock it down when they come if they need it, but just, just make sure. That's all. Yeah. Just obstructed somehow. Yeah.
Correct.
So anyway, that's, you know, again, I think by and large, they're not blocking anything from what I could see, but, but people have.
Be mindful of, yeah.
Yeah, just be mindful. You know, we, we don't, we don't want any issues with them. Certainly, we won't want an accident to occur because the sign's in the way. That's all. That's the only thing we're most concerned with. And again, we've all been very good the last couple of years. Right after the election, they're all gone. They're down and, and we're back to normal, whatever that is today, but we're back to some kind of normal. So that's where we're at. But that, appreciate that. Um, just, uh, the VNA, I mean, Mr. Zerboza mentioned it. I, I, I still think it's being misconstrued, but, uh, you know, I think we're going to try and meet with the VNA board possibly next week and the town employees just to allay their fears. I understand what Mr. Zerboza said. That's, that's fine. But I guess, you know, I, I guess to the point of whatever happens with that question, you know, the VNA, uh, just because it's in the charter means the entity has to be there, but that doesn't mean it will be in the same form. So I just, you know, just understand that. We're just trying to leave a option if need be. That's always how it has been explained, but we will continue to try and get that message out to the folks. You know, there are no, certainly no immediate changes, and certainly, we certainly, none of us can predict the future. But we certainly can predict from 2011 to now that every single year we have lost significant funding, you know, money in that program from the low of $300,000 to a high of $935,000 over, over budgets. So that's an issue that we have to address somehow. Whether it stays in the charter, it will need to be addressed. And I know we're working on it. We've been working on it for a couple of years. And quite frankly, the losses have gone up. So, and it's been unanimous. It's not a political issue, which is the most disturbing that, you know, obviously, the whole council agreed and understood what we were trying to do. Try to review commission, you know, former Speaker of the House, Eric Simowitz, Julie Erickson, Charlie, uh, the rest of the team. We're all unanimous. We, we realize there's a fix there to keep that organization going and, and productive and, you know, fiscally responsible. We spent a lot of time trying to make sure that all the town departments run that way. And by and large, we've been pretty lucky. I mean, just, just as an example, the golf course was similar, probably the closest thing to the VNA that, you know, we have services provided. And obviously, people go play golf and pay the fees to the town. But we were in the, in the red for quite a while, and we paid attention to that. We created the golf commission, and now we're in the black. So that's what we hope to see with the VNA. That is the goal. And we're just trying to make sure we have every way at our disposal to reach that goal. So that's really what it's about. It's very much been misconstrued in public. Not blaming any one person, but, um, it's kind of taken on a life of its own now, and it's disturbing for me to see the most that it's become political because, you know, now we have a candidate that is saying that it's good to have it that way. And you know, I just, I don't, it's become a political issue, which it should not be. Especially since, you know, money was being lost at the VNA during that timeframe back a number of years ago. So. But we'll get through it and we'll, I'm sure, work on fixing the VNA, and we will do the best we can. I don't know if there's any, you know, it's, you know, I mean, I don't know. That's enough said. Just it's frustrating for all of us because we all were on the same page and trying to do the best thing for the, obviously, the care for our folks in town and, and the VNA. So we will continue to strive to do that no matter what happens with the charter question. Just, just a quick question. Uh, the, the generator, do we ever, maybe you were going to update that. Maybe you got that in your town manager. We'll, we'll save that. And if we could, so we have a, a CCM meeting on November 1st. Uh, Arosh and I would like to attend. Usually, there's some good workshops there and, uh, but at night, the rest of the meeting is a dinner and the last debate, gubernatorial debate, which could be interesting while we're there to see. So we were asking the council if we could move the council meeting that week to the second. If that works for everybody. Kate, does that work for you? Come on, Kate. Yes, it does. Yes, it does, Kate. Of course, it matters. Yeah. Huh? Is that good? Same time, next night, right? We good? Jeff, work for you? Okay, we appreciate that. Yes.
Moving it to the second?
To the second, yeah, if we could. Just so we don't have to, you know, cancel it. One, one night move is, um.
Do we have to do some kind of a, some kind of a, you put it officially in the record that we're going to move to the second, or we can just all agree on that, that it works? Okay.
The only thing is be aware that it would be a special meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Can't add anything.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That should be good. Okay, I think that's it. I think I'm trying to think if there's anything else to mention, but now I think we've covered the gambit cell. Onto new business.
There's no consent agenda again.
Yes, I noted that. Okay.
So the first item on the agenda is a donation to Berlin Animal Control, cash, animal care, cat food and litter. And, uh, as Kate mentioned, since we don't have any other consent agenda items, it's the first item on the agenda.
Okay. Motion on that?
Move to accept donations to the Berlin Animal Control donation account for $115 for animal care and supplies. They have it at $225.
Thank you. Second on that? Any other questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, so moved. Number two.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is a purchase of one unmarked 2022 Ford utility police interceptor vehicle. The police department, you know, Mr. Simon's been working on this for months, try to get in line, and this is on the administrative services contract. Uh, if you have any questions, he's here to answer. Otherwise, we're asking you're cool to move ahead and go ahead and take the purchase.
I think we're good. I don't, any questions on that? While we're, uh, speaking of police, I did, I just want to, just did want to acknowledge, um, the sad situation in Bristol, as we're all very much aware of what occurred there, unfortunately, and, uh, uh, it's just horrible. It's what our first responders, police, must face every day of their career, which is a very difficult scenario. So we could just take one, one moment to, to remember the lives of those two officers and their families. Thank you. And I also want to thank the Berlin Police Department. I know they're filling in and helping them with patrols and, uh, you know, many police departments are around the state, and, uh, it's just, uh, useless, just a, no reason for what happened there, you know? They're just, just, it was a horrible, horrible thing, ruined many, many lives. And, uh, again, just, uh, something to be aware of what our officers face every day, that they go out there not knowing what will happen next. So our condolences to the town of Bristol and to, of course, the family members of those officers. Thank you. So, so the police center, yeah, this is one. Is it, I take it this was one. There was, wasn't there one that got totaled, Jim? Or we're just? Right? Oh, the last one of the, uh, what's, what's that?
You know.
What's that?
Want to get yelled at.
Seems like you've done this before, Jim.
This is the last one of, of last year's group. It was three marked cars and one unmarked car.
Okay.
Gotcha. A quick, quick question. Are we approving with the 10% contingency for 37? Or are we approving for the 34?
Car is actually going to cost 34.
Right.
Oh, you, you never know when it gets here.
Right.
You want to put mats in or something else. So that's why there's a 10%.
Yeah. So our approval will be for the 34, but if we need to bump up to the 10% contingency, we can do that too. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. And if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of one 2022 Ford utility police interceptors for the police department utilizing the state of Connecticut Department Administrative Services contract. Number 12 PSX 0194, an amount not to exceed $37,478.
Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number three is to waive the town of Berlin's purchasing requirement to award the 2023 gasoline contract to East River. This is another one of, uh, Mr. Simon's projects. As you know, the prices have been going up close to $5, um, coming down now, and we would like to lock in the price before it moves up again to it tends to be moving up, seems like it. But, um, he has a plan here. If he can lock it in, we can stay within budget. So, Jim, anything you want to add, please?
The key is, there's a lot of, lot of different things that are affecting the price of fuel right now, whether it's the war, whether it's the shortage of, uh, distilleries around the making fuel, whether it's the impact of letting go of the strategic oil reserves. There's a lot of different things going on. One of the biggest things is politics. Elections coming up. It was announced, or I read today, that they're going to release more strategic oil, huh? Try to drive prices back down. Well, the price is going to come back up at some point because we're going to have to refill that strategic oil. You don't know what's going on in Europe right now. Our gas contract is up January, December 31st, January 1st. That's two months away. Currently, the, currently, I can obtain prices that will meet our goal for the next year, for the next 14 months. As of late this afternoon, price of gas in New Haven, your harbor for us was $2.77 a gallon. With the taxes on that, put some other fees on that, we're going to probably pay around two, uh, three times to 315, which is within our budget for next year, or what our estimated budget, actually, less than I estimated for this year. So it'd probably be the smarter option to not gamble, see what's going to happen. Let's just buy the fuel now and then sit back and hopefully it goes up and we stay good. And that's what I'm opposed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, I know we're at the mercy of the markets, and, uh, if it's a pretty good price, uh, I know you pay attention to it, Jim, so we appreciate that. And, uh, yeah, I mean, lock it in.
At the high, we were paying $4.50.
Oof.
Going back to.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah.
Still paying high prices on diesel, and I don't know where that's.
I know diesel's not.
Luckily, we use a small amount of diesel.
Yeah.
For our bigger plow trucks and our fire apparatus.
Right.
Everything.
Yeah.
You know, that's $5 a gallon.
I know. That's crazy. That's not coming down at all. Doesn't seem to be, right?
Actually.
Going up, right? It went up, right? Yeah.
No, that was my question. Did this include diesel fuel by the time?
Gasoline. Our diesel contract will run out June 30th.
Well, maybe it'll come down by then. Maybe. I'm guessing not, but there's always hope. All right. Any questions for Jim? If not, we'll take a motion.
Move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and award the 2023 gasoline contract to East River Energy and allow town administration to lock in favorable pricing when it becomes available, as this is in the town's best interest.
Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, so moved. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Jim.
Agenda item number four is a purchase of real estate owned by Rio Vista Associates LLC. Uh, we have had discussions about this. Um, there are three action items that, uh, we are asking you. One is, the first one is pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24 to refer, prefer the proposed purchase by the town to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission for a report. And the second one is pursuant to section 7-11 of the charter. Request the Board of Finance, subject to the approval of the town meeting, approve a non-budgeted appropriation of $1 million from the fiscal year 23 general fund, unassigned fund balance. And the third one is actually to schedule a town meeting at 6:45 PM on November 1st. Change it to November 2nd now.
2:22. Yes. All right, thank you. So we'll save the history tonight. Um, you know, because we'll have that, obviously, we have a, a public hearing. Let's, uh, we'll send it off to the, uh, for the 824 to P and Z, and, uh, you know, we'll, when we, when we get to our, um, town meeting, we can certainly explain a little of the history, but, uh, it's been a long way. There's been, there's a lawsuit, still a pending lawsuit. Um, it's Pistol Creek property. One, one, one round one, but it's still in court. So, um, one of the options we have, but we can explain a little bit more at the town meeting. So with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, read the most, the first motion.
Pursuant to Connecticut statutes 8-24, refer the proposal purchased by the town of the real property owned by Rio Vista Associates LLC on Atkins Street, known as Assessor's Map, 22-4, block 155, lots 1 through 8, and Assessor's Map 23-1, block 15, lots 9 through 13, to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission for a report.
Second on that? Thank you. Any other, any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Number two.
Pursuant to section 7-11 of charter, request that the Board of Finance, subject to the approval of the town meeting, approve a non-budgeted appropriation of $1 million from the fiscal year 23 general fund, unassigned fund balance for the purchase of real property owned by Rio Vista Associates LLC on Atkins Streets, known as Assessor's Map 22-4, block 155, lots 1 through 8, and Assessor's Map 23-1, block 15, lots 9 through 13.
Thank you. Second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Three.
Move call a town meeting for 6:45 PM on November 2nd, 2022. Approve a non-budgeted appropriation of $1 million from fiscal year 23 general fund, unassigned balance for the purchase of real property owned by Rio Vista Associates LLC on Atkins Street, known as Assessor's Map 22-4, block 155, lots 1 through 8, and Assessor's Map 23-1, block 15, lots 9 through 13.
Thank you. Second on that?
I'll second that.
And any other questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so moved.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, um, we have an opportunity to, uh, move forward with the, uh, HVAC projects of the elementary schools, with the announcement of Governor's $150 million plan. We might be able to tap into some of that. And this is just to create a bond ordinance. And I have Kevin to give you a little background and tell us what you plan to do with this. Be a pretty darn good deal if you can get it, 33 cents on the dollar.
That's great.
What do you, Kevin?
Good evening. Um, as Arosh said, this is a request to, um, call a public hearing at your meeting on November 2nd to review approving an ordinance for $4.9 million of bonding in support of the HVAC upgrade project at all three schools. As Arosh mentioned, in, in July, they, the state approved a $150 million grant program. And a few weeks ago, they came out with all of the specifics, and it's standard practice for the state to require any municipality that applies to have approved local funding for any of these projects, so they can ensure the funding is there. The ordinance would suffice as proof that the town is committing sufficient funds locally. However, this ordinance doesn't require bonding. Um, if you go back a few years, we did the exact same exercise with the security vestibules. And based on some budget surpluses over a period of a couple of years, we funded without borrowing any money for that project. So this doesn't require borrowing 4.9 billion, uh, million, sorry. But it does meet the criteria that the state has. The deadline for applying is December 1st, which is what creates the need to move forward with the public hearing and the votes for both the council and Board of Finance to approve the ordinance.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, that'd be great if we could, the rest of this, some of this, yeah.
Ju- just to refresh your memory, the upper funds that, you know, allocated approximately $5 million towards the, uh, elementary school. So that five and perhaps get another five from, uh,
Yeah.
the state, and with our money, we'll be able to get all three done, hopefully.
Yeah. Great.
Because it's not something that we can not do. At some point, I would rather use state fund and then pay for the whole thing ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's good. What, what, what do they allocate totally? 150 million, yeah?
What, what is the likelihood that we get the full 4.9?
Um, that's a, I mean, I couldn't even put a, put a gauge on it. I mean, $150 million is a lot of money. However, when you consider the number of school districts across the state, it's, it's very likely that there, it's going to be very competitive. There's a number of communities from rural eastern Connecticut communities. Uh, the, the town manager from Coventry has been probably one of the biggest advocates for this funding from the state for several years. And you go all the way into Hartford Bridgeport, Waterbury, large schools, um, Alliance districts. We're not sure, but we think at a minimum, we're going to try for it. The worst they can say is, no, we didn't qualify. The town did pursue competitive school security grants a few years ago, and many schools were awarded. The town did receive, three out of the five schools were awarded for that grant. So we pursue the grants and, uh, hope for the best. We try to prepare to, to win ideally money for all three schools. But anything we get from the grant program would be a, a win for the taxpayers in the town.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin or anyone? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize a town manager to retain the services of Pullman and Comley LLC to prepare bond authorization documents for school HVAC upgrades and authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise for a public hearing to be held November 2nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM on an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Appropriating $4,900,000 for School HVAC Upgrades 2023 and authorizing the issue of $4,900,000 bonds to the town to meet the set appropriation pending the issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. You know, let's hope, let's hope we have some luck in getting, uh, some of this funding. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, and kudos to Doug, Doug too, working on this project.
Yeah, thanks, Doug.
A lot of work going on.
Let's hope. Let's keep our fingers crossed. So where are we at now? Appointments, whatever. So we have one, so what do we have, Kate? So.
We just have one. He put in an application.
Okay.
Yeah, or something that, or the historic district.
Okay. Got a lot of. Um, I wish I would have, I didn't, I didn't realize we had one. I'm sorry. I would have just checked with some of the. Yeah, let's just wait. I just want to see, oh, that's right. Was it one on planning zoning with that, that, we had just, right, we had removed, uh, one of them, right, for attendance and parking rack. And yeah, and look, we just wait. Let's just wait. I don't.
Do we have any prescriptions on any of those for the party affiliation? Are any of these restricted by?
Those are not, okay.
That, that is a good question, Charlie, but, uh, no, they're all open to either party.
All right, let's. I mean, yeah, I mean, we could just like. I mean, yeah, I mean, we could just like randomly pick one, but I hate to, I kinda hate to, I kinda hate to do that. We could throw a dart at it and, which, yeah, so let, let's just check with the, the chairs of the, the groups too and see. And then we'll, we'll definitely do this next time. All right, okay. So, um, yes, town managers report. Is it, is it really the town manager report already? That's way too early. I think we need to waste some time.
They're only to go on till after today, huh?
Yeah, sure. We're here. What's the difference?
Might as well, right?
Yeah.
I'm, I was kidding, Peter. He's, he's not staring at me. All right, few items, won't keep you for long. Just an update on the Timberland golf pro.
Oh, yes.
Mark Durham and I have a draft contract that we work together. And we are sending, the meeting on Thursday with the golf commission and we have given the contract to them. You'll give us any feedback they may have, any advice. Uh, but the Mark and I agree on the basic terms. We'll have to tweak a little and I'll tell you why, what's happening with that. We are also, at the same time, you gave approval, thank you, to go ahead and hire director of golf.
Oh, yeah.
And it's posted and we are getting some resumes, some applications, which means we will, we are rethinking how the golf course functions. In the past, the golf director was in the shop or in the garage, so to say, away from the clubhouse. And I would like to move the golf director where the pro shop is, so that they both would be in that proximity, close to where the action is. Uh, so Doug and I, we visited the facility. We think we have some ideas on how to make that happen. The pro shop also needs, that's where people come in. It's horrible looking carpet that is not, not in the best shape, so we want to try and do some work there as well. And I also mentioned last time, one of the changes that we are making is to bring the cash register and taking the money in under the town, not under the, the pro, which is fine, is agreed to that. And the pro gets to be a real pro and give lessons and live on tournaments and do the things that pros do, rather than cleaning the facility and managing the golf carts and cleaning the map rooms. So we are bringing all that under the town. We'll have to do some work about the storage and the space to configure that. So we'll talk, discuss all that with the golf commission as well this Thursday. Once they provide their input, they'll have a, you know, final document, which I will bring to the council, since you have to approve the post contract. As you know, he's, was the only one who, who, whose name in the hat. All right. Senior housing generator, Doug's here, he's been working with Michelle, he's, and Doug got some pricing for us to get it commissioned and operational. It's about four thousand dollars. But one of the things that we asked the Berlin Housing Authority is to confirm if it's functional and if it works, whether they will accept it. We don't want to spend the four thousand, and then they said, we don't want it, we want a new one. They are planning to take it to their commissioners at the next meeting. And once they get back to us, they'll move forward with that. Any questions on that?
I have a quick question. What does a new one cost that's equivalent to that? I mean, do we have any idea?
Doug has. I think it was over a hundred thousand.
That expensive, wow.
Like when they got the pricing, I believe, unless you have some newer pricing, Doug.
Is that what it goes for, Doug?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, I would like to.
Oh, absolutely.
Save the taxpayers' money. It's not something that you're gonna use every day.
Right.
Right, right. As long as it works.
If it works, that's great. If it doesn't, we'll go to the other option, right? Yeah.
Exactly.
What we gotta do.
Sure.
Just to keep you informed with the mobile home park.
Oh, yeah.
You know, these units are old and, and the people are also getting to a certain age that things are beginning to change there. There's one unit that is going to demolish the unit completely because the person who want me to dance? Right? I know.
I'm dope. We're playing you off the stage.
And then there's another unit that's up for sale. I, I bring this up because we probably want to think about going in a different direction and see if somebody wants to buy this. The Berlin Housing Authority has indicated at some point that they might be interested in purchasing it.
Yeah, that's right.
They have a couple of private folks that have shown some interest, but if you want to go in this direction, we, I recommend that we do R F P and solicit bids and go public with it. This is not something that we should be. We should not be in the business of renting mobile home park pods, so to say. But also things are changing now. These units are getting old and some of the folks are moving on and going and living in other system, living facilities and all that. So nothing to do right now, but we want to think about it. Might be time to rethink our business model in that.
It's worth exploring anyway. We'll see what happens, but.
So I know, is this the one that's on Demming Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, worth exploring.
While we are on the well, the Berlin Housing Authority, we are still waiting for some confirmation, switching to the senior housing project.
Okay.
Remember, they were working with securing financing and kind of enough, we had reached out to their attorney, Pullman and Comely, try to get some certification of funds availability for us to move with the private plans or anything.
Out of paper?
I've sent a couple of emails to Mr. Bajowski and he said he'll get back to, he'll get someone to get back to us, but there's nothing.
And we, whatever, we extend this to the end of the year?
End of the year, yeah.
All right, well.
So.
Clock's ticking. Taking a long time.
In terms of committee meetings, we had an ordinance committee meeting last week, discussed the changes to chapter three due to the leash ordinance and we scheduled, we will be scheduling, it'll come to the council and they will schedule a town meeting for that, a public hearing, I'm sorry, to change the language required.
The lease, yeah.
And then the second one, there was a discussion about off board, if you calls and maybe you had some materials that's under review by Attorney Capola. And we'll be meeting next Wednesday to have a further discussion on that. And we also have lots of meetings. Next Tuesday, a joint meeting of the council, board of finance, and we invited the police commission and police officers and anyone who wants to be there. We want to share with you what the ad hoc committee came up with as a plan, policy. And this is an opportunity, we will have the actuaries as well as our labor attorney there. Opportunity for you to ask questions, get a better understanding of what the pension is gonna cost, how it would be structured. Not to negotiate anything, but just to have a conversation, because most of you have not heard or seen anything and it's it will be a big financial commitment, it will be long term. So purpose of the meeting, again, for you to get comfortable, ask questions. Uh, we will get the materials out a day before. For your.
And it's, to be clear, it's just not binding, it's not an offer, it's just a fact sheet of we've had many, many discussions with the union leadership. There will be more discussions after that meeting. Like, I think we're setting one up for the week after, trying to set one up to, to move forward with the pension plan. So it's just to get everybody on the same page, council, board of finance, and again, the public. You know, police officers are welcome, the, the, the board of the, of the of the police union are, are welcome too, obviously, and and then we'll continue with the negotiation, but we've come a long way. I think there's a lot of things attractive in that back sheet and we'll, you know, we're, we're gonna get there, I think, fairly quickly.
Yep.
We'll take care of the officers and help us with retention and recruitment. We, we're having a serious problem with that, as is every police department, but we're at a as we've talked about a few times in the council and you know, every town's having an issue and most towns that went to a 401K are going back to the, the defined benefit plan, pension plan, and we just are all competing for the much smaller group of candidates that are out there. So we really, if we wanna retain great police force that we have, we, we really need to do this for the officers and for the town, for the benefit of the town, so. But, so we'll get there. It's just, you know, a step on the way and we're much closer than we were a year ago.
Great. One more item while we are on meetings. There's a request from the planning and zoning commission to have a joint meeting.
Another meeting.
Related to the whole cannabis.
Ah, yes.
Education.
Cannabis.
It's an educational meeting. I am, they've thrown a date out. If you can make it, it's tenth of November at six P M. It's a Thursday. You, I would like to. No, huh? It's a couple of days after the election, so you might have fatigue after the election, but.
For wedding. Okay. So. You have a wedding?
Not me.
No, okay.
If not, we'll try to coordinate a couple of dates from you and get back to them. It's, November is a busy month, a lot of council meetings as well as planning and zoning. We want to try and do it one of the off days. But that is not a lot of more days there. So if the tenth doesn't work, are there days of the week that looks?
But, so.
For you in terms of. Yeah.
Right. So. No, I'll be at a wedding.
I can't either.
Okay, all right, so we got two folks out, so.
And you know, the council meets November second and November fifteenth, so that's out.
But the, the day before, the ninth? I mean, I know it's the day after the election, maybe I don't want to have a meeting and maybe that's too much. All right, that's too much, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry. That's, that's. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a bit much. Yeah, so I'm sorry.
There would be samples.
Free samples for everyone who can make it. Like high school. Can't make it, you're out of luck.
What night do they meet?
So they meet on Thursdays, but.
Sixteenth?
Is the they were on the third and the seventeenth they meet.
So the sixteenth, that?
Sixteenth is a Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean, oh, 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 they wanted it there.
Would they come in?
No, no, they don't want it on there.
A special meeting?
A special.
A different.
Will they come in here on the
sixteen?
The fifteenth, an hour early?
Oh, the council meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, I could ask.
I mean, we're gonna be here.
Maybe that's easier, Peter, yeah. Yeah, maybe we could do that, yeah.
We'll find out. Yeah.
So six o'clock that night?
On eleven fifteen?
On the fifteenth. Does that make, is that right? Is that good for before the council meeting? If not, maybe the November fifteenth, the hour before our coun- council meeting.
Whoa, whoa, no, not fifteen.
Oh. The fifteenth?
Fifteenth is our council meeting.
The council meeting.
That's what we were thinking, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
An hour.
But if.
An hour before, if not, the sixteenth as an option, the next night?
The Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just a couple of options there, right? Or Thanksgiving, you know, we can come in here for Thanksgiving.
Every man.
Yeah.
No, don't think so, okay. Well, cannabis turkey, it's all the same.
So.
Oh, um.
Just to give you an idea, I mean, their plan is to, this is what they're planning, they get speakers from some of the following areas, growers, retailers, law enforcement, social services, and health officials, just to.
Oh.
Three sixty.
Well, so, so forgetting speakers. I'm guessing that hour is not gonna do it. That's.
Because you might have questions too.
Yes, I would imagine there'll be a lot of questions.
All day, Sunday, yeah.
So, this sixteenth conference, is that right? We're good on the sixteenth, sorry. I mean, I, I just think an hour, I know, I, I think. Yeah, I, I think.
At six and go till eight or whatever.
Till eleven, you know, whatever we're gonna do. Um, no, 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 but, no, so, you know, they have folks coming in. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's.
Seven.
So the sixteenth, that's seven.
At six, right?
Six, let's start at six, yeah, so we can hopefully. Cannabis folks may move slowly or quickly, and probably slowly.
All right.
Other drugs, they move quickly.
We'll confirm.
Sorry, can't, can't resist. Uh, yeah, that's good. That's good to get that discussion going, because the timeframes are running for different licenses and approvals and, you know, whatever the town thinks they want to have in the town, but it's good to talk about it, so.
All right.
That's great.
On a lighter note, when you made the turn to town hall, you probably saw the eighteenth annual scarecrow contest. They're, they're all numbered.
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
Competition, you can, if you're, if you're interested, tell people in town hall and communities and a library, you can vote if they're with scarecrow.
Yeah.
And then the trunk or treat is Saturday, the twenty-second at four thirty at Sage.
Oh, it's Sage, the Sage event, yeah.
So that'll be there as well.
That's great. And, and right, we have the, right, the, the one in, let's say, the, the twenty-ninth is the one downtown there, right? At all the businesses, the farming tavern one, I think, is the twenty-ninth, right? The, where the businesses get together. Last year, even though it was, it was rainy that day, right? If I recall, still was great crowd, great crowd of kids and folks, and it was a great, you know, great lot of candy was given out, lot of, lot of dentist appointments after. So, all right, that's good.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Arosh. Special committee reports, you mentioned we had the ordinance committee. I think that's the only one we had, right?
Yep.
To be continued, just with the, with the ATV situation there. We have it in one particular neighborhood, but you know, for townwide, we can see if we need to fix fix the ordinance. Council communications.
I had something I wanted to say really quick, just to thank you to the high school and to everybody who was involved in putting together the celebration of life for Chase Anderson on Sunday evening. Obviously, for those who don't know, we lost a member, a teenager member of the community right before school started and just a really nice celebration of his life on Sunday with a lot of his friends and family. It was just, you know, it's always great to see the community come together. Unfortunately, it's, it's in a really awful situation, but it is good to see everybody rally around the family and, and help out friends and family of Chase. He was a you know, young man who really had some things going for him and was, was with the police cadets with that with their whole organization and had a lot of stuff in front of him. Unfortunately, it's sad to see him go, but we just wanted to say thanks to everybody who came out and everybody who supports the family. You know, the, these are those situations where you, something happens that's awful to a family and then everybody sort of has attention on it and it kind of goes away, but it's you know, for the family and the friends of, of Chase, it's, it's gonna be something that continues for the rest of their lives, so any support that anybody can give to the family would be much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Another, another useless death, right? Just tragic again. Thanks. Anyone else?
Yeah, may, bring up, I, I've been approached by a number of people about the charter revision. And I want people to read the text and understand it for themselves. There's a lot of misinformation. And we had very good guidance from our town clerk and from our legal counsel on trying to simplify the language and explain it. And people seem to misunderstand it because they listen to other people. I think we have a very intelligent populace here and they should think for themselves, and I want to urge everybody to look at the questions and read the explanation and understand that. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
I just wanna say thank you to the police department and the Park and Rec for the light that came with the police, Hungerford Nature Center. We had over twelve hundred patrons that came through there on Friday and Saturday. It was amazing. The weather was perfect and appreciate the support of the town and waving fees and that kind of thing. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay. Acceptance of minutes, October fourth?
I move we accept the minutes of the October fourth council meeting. I move we accept the minutes of the October fourth council meeting.
Thank you. Second on that?
I second that.
Thank you. Any other, uh, one? Just one abstention, Peter. Unfortunately, you weren't here. Uh, but we're so happy you're back, Peter.
Thank you.
Very happy. We miss you. Um, so, um, all is in favor?
I.
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 Opposed. One abstention. So moved. And time to make a motion to move in our executive session.
I move. Do we move into executive session for pending litigations? According to Connecticut General Statute, section one dash two hundred six B, strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation and Jelica Stetson appeal.
Okay, so, second on that?
I'll second that.
And we'll, in, inviting in, uh, obviously, uh, town manager, corporation counsel. Anyone else? Good night.
Good night, ladies. Thank you.
I thank you.
Nice to see you in that. She was everyone's nurse.
Interesting. Uh, so, that's it, just, okay, so, uh, all right, so moved, and, uh, just a minute to clear the, the room here, right? I guess going in about time.
I.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's in favor?
I, I.
I.
Yeah.
Anybody opposed? No, some. Give us a minute to clear the room. Clear the room. Wow, look at all these folks. They gotta go.
Got it.